Welcome to the third in a series of a political candidate forum in advance of the November 5th general election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for the Leon County Commission at large Group One seat. I'm Regan McCarthy from WFSU Public Media, joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Daniel Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics of interest to the voting public.
The candidates for the Leon County Commission at large Group One race, sitting left to right, are incumbent Carolyn D. Cummings and David T. Hawkins. Reminder for those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion live. For those at home, here's how the forums will work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We'll have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds, sometimes shorter for follow-ups. We will keep time, and in fact, you will know when you have hit time because you will hear this. You don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but finish your sentence and we're going to move on.
If you're watching live on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and polite. Make it a question applicable to all the candidates. Any questions before we start?
I have none, thank you.
Then let's jump in with the first question.
All right, I've got the first question, and that question will start with you, Ms. Carolyn Cummings, and then we'll move next to the same question to you, David Hawkins. Starting with you, Carolyn Cummings, what's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected, and how will you achieve it?
Thank you so much for that question, and I first of all want to thank WFSU, the League of Women Voters, and the Tallahassee Democrat for organizing this very important Candidates Forum. I believe the one important thing that we as members of the public and elected officials are concerned with is the economy. And when you look at the economy, it has a ripple effect on other areas in our communities, such as affordable housing, such as homelessness, and I believe Leon County Commission has focused on the economy. It's important that here, our bicentennial year, Leon County, Tallahassee, has been designated as the top economy in the country. So I think that says a lot for what we have done as elected officials to jumpstart the economy, because when I was elected, we were coming out of COVID, and I think we've done a great job to address those adverse impacts.
Thank you. And same question to you, David Hawkins, what's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected, and how will you achieve it?
I would start with working on lowering the crime rate, and I would achieve that by talking with the DA, the prosecuting attorneys, and the judges about how they are charging the criminals and prosecuting them, and having them where they're giving them the proper sentences and keeping them in jail a little bit longer so that the crime rate is going down because they're sitting in jail where they should be, and they're not influencing younger kids to follow in their footsteps.
And I've got a follow-up question for both of you. You'll just have 30 seconds to answer this one. David Hawkins, we'll start with you. Generally, a county commissioner's job is considered a full-time position with a $90,000 salary. What's your current day job, and if elected, will you continue in it?
I work for the state, so if I win the election, I got to quit the state, which I plan on ongoing anyway. It's a full-time job where I'm a supervisor of the mailroom and the warehouse, and I planned on, if I win the election, to making this job my full-time job. I'll be there at the office all day, hoping to talk to the citizens of Leon County and answering their questions as well and trying to help them out.
And that same question to you, Carolyn Cummings.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little louder?
Sure.
Repeat the question.
Sure. Generally, a county commissioner's job is considered a full-time position with a $90,000 salary. What's your current day job, and if elected, will you continue in it?
Okay. Thank you so much for that question. Of course, I am already in that position. It is a full-time job. For the last three and a half, almost four years, I think we have worked full-time. My job does not end. At 5:00 in the afternoon, I'm engaged with constituents after 5:00 in meetings. I'm on the computer responding to constituents, responding to issues in the community, and so I believe that as an elected commissioner, if you are committed to the community, it doesn't begin at 8, doesn't end at 5. Thank you.
Do you have a current day job outside of the Leon County Commission?
I am an attorney, and I have my own private practice. And once I was elected, three and a half years ago, I curtailed my practice. So I'm in the process now of closing my practice, but of course, I have to close the cases, ongoing cases that I have, but I have curtailed my practice over 50%. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's move on to the topic of affordable housing. David Hawkins, we'll begin with you. During a February 2022 workshop on affordable housing jointly conducted by our county and city commissions, it was estimated 11,500 new affordable housing units will be needed in Leon County by the year 2045. What actions must be taken to address this need? You have one minute.
It would have to take a lot of money. I have been saying for about a decade now, and I just saw an ad, or not an ad, but an article in Times Reports where they pretty much said what I've been saying. It's time to start thinking outside the box and buying up some of these dilapidated homes for $25,000 to $40,000, and putting $100,000 in them, renovating them. Because right now, the houses you see now, the cheapest ones you're seeing being built now is $250,000 and up. Those are not affordable housing for low-income families.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, same question.
Thank you for that question. Affordable housing is a major issue in our community. It's not a one-stop-shop answer. I believe it's going to take a collaborative effort from government, city, and county, as well as our private sector, our business community, our nonprofits, and our faith-based community to come together to address the problem. Leon County has taken that issue very seriously. We have infused $3.7 million into Columbia Gardens on South Adam Street, I'm sorry, South Orange Avenue. We had a groundbreaking ceremony to just recognize the achievement of all of those renovations for housing on Orange Avenue, and we are continuing to address the housing shortage through our SHIP program, the infusion of federal funds that come in, as well as allocating funds from our state budget.
Thank you. Next question, Carolyn Cummings, we'll begin with you. How can Leon County create and preserve enough affordable housing for extremely low-income households? For example, housing and utilities would cost no more than $645 per month for two children and a single parent who works full-time for minimum wage. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. A great question. We recognize that we have about 18,000 households in Leon County that are part of the ALICE population. That's asset-limited individuals that work, and they expend more than 50% of their income on housing and on electricity as well. One of the things that Leon County can do is we can address our developers, our builders, our business community, and try to incentivize them to include more affordable housing as they develop certain properties. We have looked at it in the past, and of course, it's worth looking at for the future as we have more individuals that need affordable housing.
Thank you. David Hawkins, same question.
That is a great question. It's also a scary question, because I paid $89,000 for my house. My mortgage is under, just under $600 at 2.74% interest. My utility is about $150. The only way you're going to achieve those numbers is if you have help from the government, because you're not going to find a house with a mortgage at the interest rates they have today that's going to get you a mortgage for around $600 a month. So you're going to need a lot of help from the government and the community.
Thank you.
David Hawkins, we're going to stick with you here. We're shifting over to natural disasters, and we've had a lot of them. We've had some really close calls with hurricanes, especially lately, in which about 10 miles spared Leon County from a direct hit of vicious hurricane-force winds. What kept you up at night when it looked like a direct hit looked certain? And what does the county need to do ahead of next time when we may not be so lucky? One minute.
What kept me up was thinking about how is it going to be handled afterwards? How am I going to have to deal with my insurance company? Because from what I've been witnessing from friends of mine, they're having to fight their insurance companies to get their homes repaired. Right now, the city utilities did an awesome job on both times, all three times, the two hurricanes and the tornadoes. So I'm not worried about their, by what they're doing. I'm not worried about that. I'm more worried about the insurance companies, about what they do.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings, same question.
Thank you for that question. What we have in place is our emergency management service, and we also coordinate with the city services, county services, and we put a plan together, first of all, to warn the people of impending danger. We ask them to be prepared. If there are areas that need evacuation, they are warned to evacuate, all in conjunction with the state of emergency. What we've also done from the county standpoint is we allocated funds so that in cases of emergencies, like we experienced earlier this year with the flooding and with the tornadoes, we are able to assist our citizens. We actually allocated $1 million and put it on the street within a two-week period of time to those businesses and residences who were devastated during the tornadoes and the flooding. So I think preparedness is the key.
Our next question will be focused on homelessness, and I want to know, if elected, and this question will go to you, David Hawkins, if elected, what would you do to address homelessness? You'll have 45 seconds to answer that question.
I would like to create communities on a bus route. A good one for the first, good place for the first one would be right there on Tram Road between Monroe Street and Capital Circle, where you would build them similar to what you would have for army barracks, using Quanza Hudson stuff, and letting them come in there. That way, they'll have their own address so they can get their checks and whatnot that they need. They'll have medical in there. They'll have showers, their own place to sleep, a cafeteria, and after they get acclimated in there, you could start assigning them little jobs to help maintain the place while they're also getting cleaned up and going out looking for their real jobs, full-time jobs.
And Carolyn Cummings, what would you do to address homelessness?
Thank you for that question. I will continue to advocate for the homeless population through allocations to our host sheriffs, who we have two or three designated positions to actually engage the homeless. I will continue to support the various nonprofits, the Kearney Center, other nonprofits that provide direct services to our homeless population. And then we need to look long range at how we can address the homeless population so that it will be totally alleviated in Leon County compared to other cities in Florida. We don't have an enormous number of homeless individuals, so I think it's workable.
And to you again, Carolyn Cummings. As of October 1st, a new law now bars counties and cities from allowing a person to regularly camp or sleep on public property. Under the new law, local governments are authorized to designate a public space for camping and sleeping with approval from the state. How is the county enforcing this state law? Does a public space need to be designated by the county for camping and sleeping? And if so, where?
Okay, thank you so much for that question. It was a long question, and I didn't really actually hear the entire question. Can you speak more in your microphone?
Sure. So as you know, a new state law has gone into effect that bars counties from allowing people to camp or sleep outside, and that does allow counties to designate a space where camping and sleeping would be allowed. What is the county doing now to enforce that law? Is there a space that could be designated for camping and sleeping, and should that be happening?
Thank you so much. Yes, we are concerned about that particular provision that took effect October the 1st, but some of the prerequisites to campsites is that you have to certify through the department, I believe it's children and families, that you have no provisions or no overnight beds for the homeless population. I don't believe that that would be a certifiable fact here in Leon County. I believe that we can certainly accommodate our homeless population through the Kearney Center and other nonprofits that provide overnight bedding for the homeless population. So I really don't envision any homeless camps being established here in Leon County, because we do have provisions for them.
And same question for you, David Hawkins.
I've been seeing homeless camps on the west side of town, off Pensacola Street and Capital Circle, and right there around the Kearney Center. There's a few over off of the southeast Capital Circle area, because I've seen a couple of the homeless out there on the road holding my signs that where they wrote on the back of it. They're out there, and we need to get more stringent on what we do to help them, and that's where, what I had said earlier about building a little Quanza Huck community for them, because the ones that I've seen are single. So it wouldn't be that much of a disposition for them to have, you know, 40 people sleeping in a Quanza Huck like they do at boot camps.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to shift over to the lightning round, which is a little bit of a faster pace, well, a lot bit of a faster pace. One-sentence answers. You can certainly add an "and" and a "because," but one sentence. So we're going to start with you, David Hawkins. You'll be sharing the ballot with what some consider to be the most important election in history. Who will you be voting for at the top of the ballot?
Trump.
And why?
I've always felt we need a businessman in office, because I think personally, no offense, we have too many attorneys running this country right now.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, same question.
Thank you. I believe the most qualified individual who has a legal background, has a background of dealing with crime throughout this nation is Kamala Harris, so I would be supporting Kamala Harris.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings, sticking with you, what is your single most prized endorsement and why? One sentence.
My single most prized endorsement as a member of the county commission has been, I believe, supporting Amazon coming to our city. Amazon has infused over $200 million in our economy. It has employed over 2,000 individuals, many from the 3-2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hawkins, same question.
Endorsing me or me endorsing them?
Endorsing you.
Okay, it would be pretty much all the citizens that have come up to me and talked to me about my platform and who has agreed with me.
Okay, thank you. You'll be working with your counterparts in the city commission, David Hawkins. Who would you endorse in the pivotal city commission race with city hall control at stake?
I would have to say Curtis Richardson, if I was able to vote for the city.
And why so?
I've liked a lot of the stuff that he has done, and I feel he is pretty honest.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings, same question.
Thank you for that question. I believe in the secrecy of the ballot. I live in the county, so I cannot vote in the city commission, but I believe that there are two strong candidates on that ballot, and the incumbent is Curtis Richardson.
All right. Well, happy bicentennial. Tell us one person in Leon County history you admire and why? One sentence. Carolyn Cummings.
I admire Mrs. Altamis Barnes.
And why so?
Because she is a great historian, and she has brought much of the African-American history of Leon County to life through the Riley House Museum, and she continues.
All right. David Hawkins, same question.
Thinking about that, I would have to say Bobby Bowden, because he is a great, or was a great all-around person. He knew how to treat people, and he actually made a good preacher, I guess you could say, because he led a sermon at downtown First Baptist Church.
Thank you. David Hawkins, true or false, preserving our trees is as equally important as economic development?
True.
Because?
You got to have trees.
Okay. Carolyn Cummings, same question.
That question is true. It's right up there as being important to the citizens of Leon County. We certainly protect our canopy rose. We concerned about our environment.
All right. Last question in the lightning round. What is the single biggest thing you have done to make Leon County a better place to live? Carolyn Cummings, one sentence.
The single most important thing I have done is be supportive of infusing economic development in Leon County, which has resulted in Tallahassee, Leon County being found to be the top economy in 2024. And I think that's important, because this is our bicentennial year.
Thank you. David Hawkins, same question.
I've helped several people that I know start their businesses and got them connected with some people to help them with some of their problem areas that they were having so they can prosper.
Okay, thank you. You did it, and we're tired. We've been asking all the questions. What's a question you'd like to ask your opponent, and your opponent will have one minute to answer? David Hawkins, you got to start it. What's a question you'd like to ask your opponent?
How has it been over the last four years with dealing with some of the tribulations of the homeless people?
It has been an exercise that causes a lot of anguish, but we have great people in city government, in county government. We have a great county administrator, and we have individuals who have the responsibility of looking for ways to help the homeless, and they also coordinate the services of the homeless with those service providers, with the nonprofits, with the Kearney Center and other groups. And so it's frustrating in a sense that we still have the homeless, but I know those numbers are reducing, those numbers are coming down, and we just have to continue to work holistically as a community, county, city, and all the other groups, and I think eventually we will solve the problem.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, same opportunity for you. What's a question you'd like to ask your opponent?
Yes, my question for Mr. Hawkins is, what complaints did you have about my service as the county commissioner that propelled you to launch a campaign against me?
I haven't received any complaints. It's just one of those things where I started running for this seat back in 2015 against Mary Ann Lindley. Did pretty good. I knew I was going to lose, but I wanted the experience. And it's just, I've been wanting to get on the commission so I can try and solve some of the problems. There's nothing against you personally. It's just I wanted to get on the commission before I get too old and try and solve some of the problems.
Thank you. Changing topics.
All right, that takes us now to the topic of public safety, and Carolyn Cummings, we'll start with you. In your opinion, what are the main causes of gun violence in Tallahassee and Leon County? And is the county addressing it effectively?
Gun violence is a big issue, has been a big issue, but we have seen the numbers come down. We have addressed it through campaigns in conjunction with the Tallahassee Urban League, where we urge individuals, if you leave your guns in your car, lock your car, because many of the guns used in the commission of crimes have been stolen from cars. Again, we all have to work together. Like our sheriff says, we're all in. We're all in in trying to address the gun violence, because it certainly adversely affects our young people in our community. So I think we just have to continue to have a collaborative effort and recognize that gun violence has no place in our county, in Leon County.
And David Hawkins, same question to you.
Okay, I am pro-Second Amendment. I own guns, I shoot guns. I think the biggest issue with the gun violence is the easy access to them for the criminals, like she had said, people breaking into cars and getting them. We need to be more stringent on making the owners of the guns be more responsible for owning them and taking care of them and storing them. And I'm not, the one thing our governor did that I did not like was make it where you can carry a concealed weapon without a permit, because now the people aren't getting the training they should get. We need to make it where they need to go to the school to get the training before they can carry a gun on them.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the topic of Blueprint. Local voters initially created Blueprint in 1989. It's funded through a 1% sales tax. The Blueprint Board, made up of the city and county commissioners, has two functions: support infrastructure and economic development. Make an elevator pitch to voters that our money is being spent wisely or unwisely. In one minute, David Hawkins, we'll begin with you.
Okay, I have the thing here where it was... Okay, I have a thing here where it was renewed in 2020 and it doesn't say anything about building housing. It's for infrastructure and roads and sidewalks and stuff like that. And that's what it should be used for to where we need a lot more sidewalks. And I think that's what it needs to be used for is infrastructure.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, same question.
Uh, thank you. I believe the blueprint boards has utilized the funds wisely. From an economic development standpoint, I think we can all chronicle, um, Amazon coming here. There's no question they have infused the economy from a positive standpoint. From the infrastructure standpoint, we see improved roads, improved structures. We, if you go to the airport, you see where we have the airport gateway that is underway. You see the, the new full lane structure in front of the airport. And also next week, we will be breaking ground, or rather, this week, we will be breaking ground on the northeast park. So infrastructure is, is the roads, but also areas where our citizens can enjoy good quality of life. So creating parks, recreational areas, we have walking trails, we have bike trails. So we have certainly utilized those funds over the years in a positive manner that has benefited the citizens of Leon County.
We have some follow-ups and you'll be able to expand. David Hawkins, we'll go over to you though and start with your 30-second thoughts on some particular projects. The question is, was it worth it? Football stadiums and sports fields. David Hawkins.
Uh, we should not have sunk any money into the Doak Campbell Stadium because that is a state-funded college. Uh, I would like to see more sports fields for the children coming up, you know, for Little League and stuff like that. We have, I think it's 160 acres out Appalachia Parkway we can expand on now. And they're starting to, but they can add a few more ball fields out there.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings.
Thank you. As a board, we have criteria that we follow when we expend money or vote to expend money in any particular area. As far as Doak Campbell Stadium, staff who, who is very capable and educated, did an analysis on whether or not funding Doak Campbell would provide any economic development, whether we jumpstart the economy in any area. And of course, their report came back positive. And so I supported that expenditure.
Okay, sticking with you, Carolyn Cummings, was it worth it? The 2.56 million in incentives for Amazon, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I certainly believe it was worth it. As I've said before, the infusion of 2,000 jobs, infusion of, of over $2 million in the economy, and that's just for the first year and it's going to continue to grow. So absolutely.
Thank you. And to you, David Hawkins.
Well worth it, yes. They did good voting for it and I applaud them for that. And I would like to see more manufacturing coming to Tallahassee as well.
Okay, sticking with you, David Hawkins, for this one, the 1.8 million and the specially-created recoverable grant for the Somo Walls Distillery Project. Was it worth it?
Um, from what I've seen so far, I'm going to say yeah. Yeah, I think it was.
Okay, Carolyn Cummings.
Yes, I believe it was worth it. I believe it was important. We are looking at revitalizing the south side and I believe Somo Walls certainly has shored up the south side and we see other businesses of being interested in coming to the south side and helping to develop that area as well.
All right, final follow-up on this topic. Carolyn Cummings, first with you. The rising costs of the $134 million airport gateway, was it worth it?
Thank you. We, we recognize that there is an inflationary measure in everything we do with blueprint. We project projects, we approve projects, but when they come to fruition, the cost, you know, has, has elevated. The airport gateway project cost has increased. However, the budget that has been presented to blueprint, it continues to be a balanced budget and I certainly support the airport gateway expenditure.
David Hawkins.
I'm still on the fence with that one because the last that I've heard on it, they were going to divide a neighborhood instead of coming straight down, um, Spring Hill Road. They were going to cut down through Lake Raffa Road and come through a neighborhood with that big road. And I, I don't think they should split the neighborhood if they're still planning on that. I think just come straight down Spring Hill Road to the stadium would be the way to go.
All right, we're going to shift over to county management. Mr. Hawkins, according to its strategic plan, one of Leon County government's core practices is exercising responsible stewardship of the community's resources. In your opinion, is Leon County's government a responsible steward of our community's resources? Why or why not? 45 seconds.
Um, they're trying to be. I've been seeing too many sewage treatment plant mishaps or spilling sewage all over But our resources, I think they're doing a pretty good job of it.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, same question.
Yes, thank you. Being a good steward of the county's resources is certainly multifaceted. And I believe with our comprehensive plan, the county government has planned in so many areas to make sure that we are good stewards, including, you know, the environment. What the county has done is also allocated funds to show up those areas that are deficient. So there's a lot of work to be done, but I think that we have certainly shown that the taxpayers can trust the county government to be good stewards of, of the resources.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, sticking with you, what do you make of the dysfunction across the street at city hall with the city, with the very divided city commission? And how does that impact county government or blueprint functions? 30 seconds.
Uh, thank you. I wouldn't characterize county government or city government as, as dysfunctional. I believe the city has its issues, the county has its issues, and as elected officials, we work hard to try to address any bottlenecks or any issues that might be adversely affecting the citizens. And I believe the city is doing the same thing and certainly the county is doing the same thing. And I think in the final analysis, we come together as elected officials to do what's best for the citizens.
David Hawkins, same question.
Uh, with what the city commissioners have been doing, it's pretty embarrassing with all the infighting. Uh, you don't see that with the county, which I'm proud of. And I think the city could take some lessons from the county on how they run, run things.
All right, thank you.
Let's talk about development. The public has expressed concern that the Walani development could be to blame for increased flooding of the Mikasuki Greenway and nearby neighborhoods. If elected, what, if anything, will you do to mitigate the impact of the Walani development and its impact on its neighbors, including the Greenway? Carolyn Cummings, let's start with you. 45 seconds, please.
Thank you. There's certainly a great concern about the Mikasuki Greenway. We are concerned about any environmental effects. We're certainly concerned about flooding. The planning for the Mikasuki Greenway is ongoing. There are safeguards in place to make sure every aspect of that Greenway is protected and it's ongoing. So even though we, we have a plan, we have to weigh the interest of the citizens with the interest of property owners, the interest of those that use the Greenway, but it's, it's ongoing. And I think if there's anything adverse that, that occurs, the, the county will address it.
Thank you. David Hawkins, same question to you.
Uh, back when they first started talking about the canopy, it was, um, to me, I think it was poor planning because they put it between two canopy roads. And when I went to the meetings, the first question I asked them was, how are you going to move all the cars? And they couldn't answer it because you're looking at probably 5,000 cars a day coming, going out of that area onto Capital Circle and the two canopy roads. And I think now, probably the only thing they can do now is put a big reservoir back there to catch all the storm water instead of a small holding pond. They need to go and put a big reservoir, like a lake or something back there.
Thank you. Next question. The public is concerned about developers who clear-cut land and destroy natural features with little regard to its impacts on wildlife and the environment, surrounding neighborhoods and traffic. If elected, what, if any, actions will you take to address such concerns and mitigate such impacts? 45 seconds and we'll start with you, Carolyn Cummings.
Uh, thank you for that question. I do believe that we have policies and procedures in place to address those. I don't believe developers are clear-cutting trees without it being evaluated. The application for development has to go through various avenues with the county. And if it's in city limits, it has to go through, uh, city analysis as well. And so I, I understand citizens' concerns, but we do have procedures in place to make sure trees that are cut have been, have been properly looked at and that permits have been properly given for that cutting. And I believe that will continue.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the economy. David Hawkins, we'll begin with you on this question. Tallahassee Leon County has a high degree of food insecurity. What can the county commission do to address this? 45 seconds.
I've contacted Publix about four times now. They're probably tired of hearing about me to see if they can't open up smaller stores in those areas where they sell just the Publix brand products and then local produce. I'm still waiting to hear back from the fourth letter I sent them. We've been in contact. They, they keep telling me that they're thinking about it. They're, they're discussing it. Uh, I've seen where Dollar General is now building grocery stores. I'd like to see them come in and put some in those areas. As far as the county, what the county and the city commissions can do, unless they build them themselves, I don't know what they can do. You know, they can give them incentives to come there, but they need those more than they do liquor stores.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings.
Yes, there are food deserts in certain areas. Unfortunately, we have seen an influx of stores, grocery stores being closed in areas where citizens, many citizens don't have a transportation. But we will continue, we have an Office of Economic Vitality with the county. We have other offices where we will continue to see what we can do from a county standpoint to incentivize stores, grocery stores and, and other smaller stores that can provide certain goods and services to the community to fill that void where there are food deserts.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn Cummings, we'll stay with you for this one. The Children's Services Council was approved by Leon County voters in 2020. How effective have its activities, services and programs been? In 45 seconds, please.
Uh, thank you for that question. We are very proud of the Children's Services Council. I believe that it has been, it's effective as it, as it can be for the first, what, two, three years, two and a half years of, of operation. Uh, the Children's Services Council was required to do a needs of assess, a needs assessment in the county before we could put any money on the street. I am the county's representative on the Children's Services Council and we have supported summer programs, we have supported summer feeding programs, we have, we have supported other areas that directly affect our children from preschool up to high school, and I think we will continue to do so.
Thank you. David Hawkins, same question.
Uh, I voted against it when it first came out. Still not quite happy with them. They have been doing the feeding programs and stuff for the schools, but that's all I've heard that they've done. They don't, they need to be more openly with what they do so we know what they're doing. Because I really don't know much about what they've been doing, except for the feeding after-school programs and summer programs. I'd like to know more of what they're doing, but they're not putting it out there.
Okay, thank you.
Let's switch topics to the county budget. So this year, county commissioners opted to keep their property tax rate the same, but because of rising property values, the county reaped an additional $19 million in revenue, a sizable tax increase under Florida law. So my question for you in 45 seconds, Carolyn Cummings, is should the county do more to tighten its belt and offer taxpayers relief?
The county, and thank you for that question. The county has not raised its millage rate for 13 years. And when there is, when you realize an increase in taxes, of course, in Florida statute, I mean, when you realize an increase in revenue on the Florida statute is considered a tax increase. But what Leon County has done very effectively is utilize any increase in tax revenue without raising the millage rates to make sure we have a reserve. And one of the prime examples, examples of utilization of that reserve is we were able to infuse $1 million a couple of months ago to those individuals, businesses and residences that suffered from the tournadas.
Thank you. And David Hawkins, same question.
Uh, I'm glad that they didn't raise the millage rate because I've been saying for years, they don't need to be raising the property taxes at all. Just wait for these, all these hundreds of homes they're allowing to get built to roll in and you'll reap it. And it is starting to happen. In fact, they should start rolling it back, even if it's just minor increments. I'd like to see them start rolling it back some. And, uh, because we're going to have another thousand homes coming online before too long because they have, they've approved several different new subdivisions. So this is coming, so they shouldn't have to raise it.
And I'd like to ask a follow-up question. We'll start with you, David Hawkins. Is it right to give county employees, including high-earning managers across the board, non-merit-based 5% raises year after year when many of your constituents don't get such raises? 30 seconds, please.
Non-merit raises? Uh, no. No. It, uh, to me, you should, you should earn it.
Carolyn Cummings.
Uh, thank you for that question. I believe we have to consider the inflationary effects and what the county has done this past year is we gave across the board 5% raise to the county employees. And that's certainly a recognition of the higher cost of living and I think it's very proper to do that.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to shift over to the topic of campaign fundraising. Commissioner Cummings, this at-large race has one of the most lopsided fundraising figures of all the local races. Commissioner, you've raised more than $94,000, including multiple checks from some of the county's biggest real estate interests. Mr. Hawkins has raised only $9,000, all from his own pocket. Commissioner Cummings, you've spent roughly $82,000 so far, with much of it going to your county aid for political consulting. Why have you raised so much money this cycle and why has so much of it gone to your aid? 45 seconds.
Uh, thank you. I take my position as the county commissioner very, very serious. And I also take the fact that I have a challenger very, very serious. I respect Mr. Hawkins. He's run in races before and I think I would be remiss if I didn't take his candidacy serious. Uh, I'm serious about representing the citizens of Leon County. I would like to do that. And so my activity as far as campaigning this time, I hope indicates my seriousness about continuing to represent those citizens.
All right. Mr. Hawkins, why have you not collected a single check from a Leon County resident? What does that say about your community support? 45 seconds.
Uh, that should say a lot about my community support because like I've turned down donations because I, first thing I tell them is with this economy, you need it more than I do. I've, I sold a favorite Mustang of mine to pay for my campaign. I've sold an enclosed race car trailer to pay for this. I saved up two tax returns for this. It's, I'm, I'm taking this serious, but I'm also not bombarding people with nuisance calls and ads. All the signs you see out there on the side of the road, I put those there myself. I go around every weekend and clean around them. When the campaign's over, like before, I'll go out there and pick them all up myself.
We're getting to the home stretch here.
All right, we have a big election coming up with our All right, we have a big election coming up with our Florida Constitution with some proposed amendments. Carolyn Cummings, we'll begin with you on this question. Voters will be asked to approve or reject an amendment to the Florida Constitution that would legalize recreational marijuana for adults 21 years and older. State-licensed entities would be authorized to distribute marijuana and related products. Why do you support or oppose Amendment 3 to allow the adult personal use of marijuana? And, in your opinion, how would its passage impact Leon County? One minute, please.
Thank you for that question. I support the amendment. Being an attorney, having represented clients in the criminal arena, I have seen, I've had clients who have been arrested and charged for just having a minute amount of marijuana on them, and these were adults. So I believe it's important to decriminalize the use of marijuana, and I believe in doing so, it will reduce our criminal justice system, it will reduce the court system, the number of cases in the court system, and I believe that overall, it would benefit Leon County in the sense that I believe gun violence and drug activity that has resulted in gun violence will be reduced as well.
Thank you. David Hawkins, same to you.
I'm kind of leaning to approve it. I'm not quite all the way there yet, but so far, I'm leaning towards approving it.
All right, well, we'll stay with you for this next question. Voters will also be asked to approve or reject Florida Constitution Propose Amendment Number 4. It stipulates that no law shall prohibit, penalize, delay, or restrict abortion before viability or when necessary to protect the patient's health as determined by the patient's healthcare provider. Why do you support or oppose this amendment? One minute.
I'm pro-life. I'm a mechanical-type guy. When you can take an egg and a sperm and create a human being, to me, that's a miracle. So I'm pro-life for that. If it endangers the mother, or if you already know the baby's not going to make it, or it's from rape, then okay, you should go to the doctor and get with the doctor and work it out with him or her. But I am pro-life.
Thank you. Carolyn Cummings, same to you.
Thank you for that question. Of course, being a woman, I certainly support that amendment. I believe that women should have the right to control what happens with their own bodies. I believe the decision should be between a woman and her doctor and not the legislature legislating what happens in those situations. So I certainly support that amendment.
All right, one last question before closings here. Name one specific thing the county is not spending enough money on and one thing the county is spending too much money on. 45 seconds. Carolyn Cummings.
Thank you for that question. I think the expenditure that the county makes in every particular area is driven by the county budget, and the county budget is, of course, has parameters, and those funds come from the taxpayers. And so I think there are many areas where we could spend more if we had more. Homelessness, affordable housing is certainly an area that I believe we could expend more on, and that way, we would reduce that population. But I think we have to operate within the means that we have, and I think we do a good job of doing that.
Is there an area that's spending too much money on?
I don't believe that there's an area that we are spending too much money on.
All right, David Hawkins, same question.
I don't think we're spending enough on the public safety and getting the crime rate down, and I think we're spending too much money on paying incentives for things to happen when you don't have to pay that much out for construction and stuff, bringing communities here and all, and businesses. Instead of giving them tax incentives, I'd like to see them, give them free permits and let them break ground sooner than they have been.
All right, thank you. Y'all have made it to the end here. We're going to have closing arguments. That is a minute where you get to speak directly to voters. David Hawkins, we're going to let you start, and then we will end with the commissioner.
My name is David T. Hawkins. I've lived in Leon County for 57 years. I've seen it go through a lot of changes. My main goal is to reel in wasteful spending, lower the crime rate, improve the economy, and help move Leon County into a positive direction. Different ways it could go, but we need to take it into a positive direction so we can improve, expand, and prosper. And I want to make it where we can bring communities together on special projects and stuff throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings, take us out.
Thank you. I'm Carolyn Cummings. When I was elected three and a half years ago, our city and our county was ravaging from COVID, from the adverse effects of COVID. But over the last three and a half to four years, I have supported many initiatives to upstart our economy to the part where in 2024, Leon County, Tallahassee area, has been designated as the top economy in the entire United States with the city and county the size that we have. So I think that speaks a lot of my, of the fact that I have been a county commissioner. I have supported all those initiatives to jumpstart the economy, to support our nonprofits, to support our business community, to support other entities, our faith-based community, and I think collaboratively, we need to come together holistically and continue to address the economic issues in our community, and I would like to be at the table to continue to do that.
And with that, I would like to say thank you, on behalf of the three of us and all of us here, to the candidates and to our audiences for joining the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU, and the Tallahassee Democrat for this program. You can find a replay of this forum on our YouTube pages, tallahassee.com and wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be Wednesday, October 16th at 11:00 a.m. Eastern on WFSU 88.9. Please tell your friends.
And remember, early voting for the general election begins October 21 and ends November 3rd. Election Day takes place on November 5th.
We have another forum coming this afternoon at 1:00 p.m. with the District 4 Leon County Commission candidates, so come back for that. If you have any questions for any of our upcoming forums, please email us at news@tallahassee.com. And you can look for our special online election, Ultimate Election Guide of the Tallahassee Democrat with interviews with all the candidates and a collection of our coverage, which will be available starting on early voting on Monday. Thank you so much. We'll see you soon. Have a great day.